Oh reopen our session, time is one thirty. Who wants to go first?
I'll get it done, okay.
All right, sounds good. Shree. Thank you. So this is on the VOKA and the CFR, uh CFA grant.
Correct.
Yeah. So if you wanna give us an overview real quick?
Um, uh, our VOKA grant, uh, kind of victims act, act grant, the two year cycle. Um, so we just finished the process of, of reapplying for the twenty one through twenty three, um, cycle. Um, we were, oh, we are awarded, it's a non-competitive grant, so, um, we are awarded a hundred and sixty one thousand sixteen dollars for our total grant award. And, uh, we were granted a match waiver. VOKA requires a twenty five percent match, um, and because of COVID relief, the legislature, um, did away with match, so, for now. So for this cycle, um, we don't have any match that we need to do, which takes some burden off the county and what we're doing for funding wise. So, um, that was good news for, for this year and, um, everything else is pretty, pretty standard. There were no surprises, um, for us in the negative, so. You have any questions about it for me?
That's a biennial.
Yes.
Yeah. So this is just for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three period?
Yes.
Um, is there a lot of difference between, uh, one or before? Have you noticed any difference from the last one?
So this was my first time actually applying and doing the whole process from start to finish. Um, so the whole thing was new to me as far as like how the whole process works. Um, Caitlin Roberts did the grant before me and she had left just as this process happened. So two years ago, I just presented to you, but I didn't have any idea, um, you know, about the, the grant process and all of that. Um, so as far as surprises or differences, it's, um, it's pretty standard how you can spend the money. Um, the last biennial, uh, we had trouble coming up with ways to spend out the money because they're very specific on how we can spend the money. Uh, we had some ideas on some programs we tried to implement and they just weren't gonna fit in the VOKA guidelines. Um, so this year, I just, um, I just gr- uh, budgeted pretty much the same way we did last year and we'll just keep trying to find new, new ways to, um, support victims that fit into VOKA guidelines, uh, to be able to use the funds. Um, what I'd really like to see is we don't have, um, uh, sheltering for victims of domestic violence. So we have to put people up in hotels, that creates a problem for the county when we're using a county credit card to put somebody up in a hotel and we can't guarantee that they're not gonna trash the room and that come back on the county. Um, so it, it creates a little bit of a problem. I, I wanna find a way to have some kind of safe housing for people that, that there isn't that county liability credit card issue. Um, we can sub award our grant dollars to another organization to do that. I just haven't found somebody to do that with yet. Our other big, um, gap is, um, we have a really hard time getting people into, um, counseling when they're experiencing a crisis. Um, I can take them down to the wellness center, we can do a warm handoff, but it's three weeks or more before they can get an intake or get, uh, into see a counselor. And then I'm just seeing what my victims not follow through because there's so much time there. And I know it's a staffing issue, um, that, you know, everybody's seen across the board. Um, I just would love to be able to find a way to use funds to do that. Um, we had a plan that we presented to the hospital two years ago and VOKA turned it down. Um, the hospital was on board, wellness center was on board, and then VOKA turned it down. It just didn't fit into their funding guidelines for how we spend the money. So we're just trying to be creative and, and find ways to, to help support.
This is great. Is the, uh, the total here being about a hundred and sixty one thousand is on the VOKA and then thirty thousand on the CFA, is that for the whole biennial order?
Correct.
Okay, so that's relative to a year period?
Yes.
So, so as your guidelines, do they give you a manual on what the guidelines are?
Yeah, I do have a manual. And, uh, you know, every time I think we've got, you know, a way to, to do it, um, you know, we presented, write it up, present it, and then, um, have to, you know, see what, what they do, can do with us, um, for the, the grant coordinators and, and stuff. And, um, so, um, with the counseling issue that we had with the hospital, um, we had a plan. We wanted to, um, do a lot like what parole and probation does with the drug court and fund a portion of a position for a counselor to be available to us, um, just like they kinda do with drug court. And, um, so we got it all, we did a memorandum of understanding, we had it all ready to go and then we presented it to the grant and they wanted us to do, um, instead of paying for a provider, they wanted us to just pay for each victim that needed, needed to have the counseling. So on a, on a as client basis, um, that doesn't solve our problem because it's not that we don't have the clients going for the counseling is that they don't have enough practitioners to see people quick enough. Um, and so, um, it, it didn't meet our need. Um, most of our clients have, uh, organ health plan or some other form of insurance that they take advantage of. And so we didn't really need to pay for their counseling, we needed to pay for a provider so that the wellness center had somebody there. Um, so it kinda just, it kinda fell through right there. So it's, it's those little, those little things. Um, the other part is that, uh, we have to be very careful with how we spend dollars as a system-based program. Um, we're in the business of prosecution and so we can't ever have the appearance that we are using VOKA funds to pay off a witness or to pay for a witness or a victim's testimony or anything like that. So, um, if, if it looks like we're paying for, um, a victim's housing and the, and the, and the victim's, um, food and clothing and, and whatnot for, in, in return for their testimony, um, it gets, it gets sticky. So that's why they want us to sub award money to another organization that's just a community organization to take care of the housing part. Um, and then we pass the money to them to help them do that. So it's all there, but we have to find the loopholes to try to make it work within the VOKA guidelines.
And a lot of the, uh, those guidelines is covered under section five in the grantee's agreement? Or is there more to, um, that I, I'm?
Section five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's not page numbers on here, so it's not helpful.
There are not. That's what I was just looking for.
Okay, so I, there is, um.
Yeah, it's just the grantee's agreement.
Yeah, so I, the grantee's agreement does not include the VOKA allowable's and disallowable's. There's a whole, um.
There's a whole nother section, basically.
There's a whole nother, um, book.
And that's, that's what you were referring to, basically, the, yeah, manual, sort of.
Yes. Yes. Yes, there's a manual of what is allowable and disallowable.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
How much of it did you spend last year?
Oh, good question. Um, I would need to look at my spreadsheet from the end. So the, the biennial ended in October. Um.
So how much did you have left over?
I think we were, I think we were about fifty thousand unspent.
And we provided the match last time?
So this is the yes. We did.
How much?
The match would have been around forty eight thousand for the biennial last, last time. Um, and we, um, Anne does a lot of, of the fiscal part of it. Um, I, I'm just, just learning that part of it. Um, but, uh, we used, so you can, you can match with state funds and CFA are state funded, VOKA is federal. So we used all of the, the CFA dollars, which was thirty thousand something, um, as my salary. That all went to my salary and then it was used as match. Um, and then benefits. Um, so my job is a hundred percent funded through the grant. Um, and then Marla and David are also, um, twenty percent and ten percent funded through the grant. So benefits, the county can use benefits and, and things like that as match. Um, so between those two, we kinda got match covered. We also use volunteer hours as match and, um, I have done pretty well in keeping volunteer hours up for that, so.
But we don't need a match this time?
We do not. But we, I still have to have volunteer hours regardless, so.
Good deal. Right, well, that, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And we, there's no other questions and I guess we'll just act on that tomorrow and hopefully get that all taken care of.
Okay. Okay, I think I marked where everybody's supposed to sign, so hopefully that's.
Okay.
Works and.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you guys for all your support, appreciate it.
Thank you, sure.
See ya.
Um, ready? Come on up. This is, um. Yeah, this is on the, uh, IGA, and this was the document that we had emailed, it was the digital copy, correct?
We set ours.
Yes, this is perfect. I, I have it on my phone, so I've got it right here. Um, it's a big document.
It is, and I have not had a chance to read every word yet. It's a big surprise.
It's okay, it's only a couple hundred pages.
Yeah.
So.
Um, I did, uh, review the services, uh, however. And so my main question really, because I'm so new to all of this is, is there anything that you can tell me, has it changed from last year? Is there anything new that I should know? Is there anything, you know, that we need to focus on as far as the services we deliver?
What's the additional services?
No, I, I, we haven't really done any amendments on this one, right? So this is just a continuation.
Okay. I, I will state that on the assertive community treatment services, we are in the process of trying to get an ACT team, um, up and running. It's gonna start with supportive employment. And so I've been working with Philby and talking with Charlie, um, at the hospital to see what we need to get that implemented. Um, right now, just like, you know, what Shree was saying, we are so short-staffed. We're having a hard time covering all the programs that we need to have covered. But, um, as I'm learning of all the things that we need to have, I'm beginning to reach out for help and to start implementing the things that we need to.
I remind everyone what ACT team is.
It's the asserted community treatment. So it has to do with individuals with severe and persistent mental illness that need, um, a higher level of care. So the, the idea around the ACT team is to have this person, uh, being seen at least weekly, maybe even more, uh, by a therapist, having case management services so that there's additional contacts, um, having them in a supportive employment program so we can get them working, uh, with a job coach so they don't have to be expected to go and, um, you know, manage a job on their own. They'll have someone there to support them. Um, twenty-four seven coverage for crisis, which we have anyway, and then also access to a licensed medical provider, which would either be Ellen Mauser or Amy Field. Um, and so like I say, we, we pretty much have the ability to have an entire ACT team except for the supportive employment piece, and so that's what I need to be working on.
Okay.
And then our ESA program, um, has been kind of armed out to a, a different county. Um, trying to remember the name of the county. They got the funding for their county and our county because again, we didn't have anyone to, uh, handle that program.
And the ESA is?
ESA is the Early Assessment and Support Alliance. And so that is for kids essentially, but ages like six to twenty-one that have, uh, a psychotic break early on. Um, most individuals who, uh, experience psychosis or are diagnosed with schizophrenia, that usually happens in later adolescence to early adult. But there are some cases where kids will start showing psychosis very young and that's where we have the ESA team. Um, and so they've been being referred to, we've only had a couple, but they've had to be referred to a psychiatrist, um, like up in the Bend area because we haven't, uh, been able to have that program and we don't have the funding for the program right now, so.
Okay. Yeah, I did not really see too many other questions that I have on this. Do we wanna talk about some of the dollar amounts and everything that are attached to this? Or have you kinda gone through any of that?
I am not well-versed on the dollar amounts at this time.
Okay, that's fine. Are there questions from board?
Not me, or me. Just looking at it on the phone too, so.
Yeah, a little light reading.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So do you see any, why didn't that end of the tunnel for hiring, uh, your people or?
Oh, well, that, that's kind of a loaded question. I, I feel like there are ways that we can, uh, increase our workforce. The difficulty is, is are we going to have the resources and the funding to, to be, um, you know, to be a, a place of interest for people? Um, one of the, I think one of the big things, you know, that we have for us being, uh, basically a frontier area is the, uh, student loan repayment assistance. And that is something that is advertised, um, when we put out to hire. The problem with that, as some of us have learned, is that it's not a given. You come to work here, you know, for the hospital, you essentially are, are told or you understand that that is a benefit and then you apply for it and you can be turned down. Um, there's also some requirements in some of the program. Well, the one program we have at the hospital now, I believe we're looking into a second one. But sometimes the, um, the criteria is very, very difficult. Um, so like I have Haley Rourke up in Christmas Valley, who historically has had the highest caseload of all the therapists until now because we're so low down here on the south end. Um, sees, you know, many, many clients a week. And then when she signed up for the program, she could only get credit for halftime because you have to see clients for like thirty-six hours a week out of your forty hours. And these therapists, they have meetings, they have phone calls, they have consultations, they have supervision. They have all these other things that, that come into the time. That's part of being a community mental health center. You know, I have, I have therapists that also, uh, you know, have to be on call or they have to be the, uh, abuse investigator or a PCI investigator. Um, and that takes a lot of time. And so that, that doesn't count as like direct, you know, client, uh, contact. And so when you're expected to have like thirty-six hours of direct client contact in a community mental health center, it's almost impossible with the other duties and responsibilities that they have. And so if you can't get thirty-six hours and they put you down as a halftime or part-time employee according to the program and it takes twice as long to get the benefit of the assistance with the student loan payments. So I would really like to, you know, be able to find a, a different program, something that would be a little more user-friendly for our folks. Um, so we could, you know, kind of use that more as an enticement to get people to come and work here. Um, other than that, I mean, it's, it's hard. I, I am trying to promote from within, so a lot of times like I'll hire, we'll hire someone for the front desk, front desk receptionist. And as they spend time with us and working with our population, then they can show that they have a couple of years' experience, uh, dealing with people in the mental health system. And then I can get them certified through MACBO as a QMHA and as a QMHA, then they can become, uh, like a case manager and help in that respect. Um, and so I'm, I'm really trying to, to beef that program up because the less people can see a therapist, the more they need to have other resources like case management, peer support services. I would absolutely love to have a drop-in center, uh, in this community, um, but that's, uh, that's a future endeavor.
Yeah, and so on that note, you know, talking about like say inpatient services, um, what are, what's the level of inpatient services that we have in the county right now?
As far as like how many we have placed? I know we have one, uh, one at the state hospital, um, who will be there for a very long time. We have one who has recently returned from the state hospital and is in jail and will be moving forward, um, on that. And then we have one youth in a treatment facility. And unfortunately, I do not know how many people we have in rehabilitation centers because that's S U D side of things and I haven't picked up on all of that yet, so.
Gotcha. And one of the things I, I, you know, when I was kinda teasing through this, I, I do a lot of word searches so I can just kind of go to the things that I'm interested in and kind of look and where it mentions those subjects throughout the document and it kind of helps me just stay on certain topics. But I, it's on page ninety-two of the document. It goes into the intermediate, um, psychiatric inpatient services.
Mm-hmm.
And it also stipulates a calculation for the financial assistance from OHA, uh, for those inpatient services. And, oh, it states that OHA will provide financial assistance to the county at eight hundred and thirty-four dollars per day per authorized individual. Um, and so, you know, there's, there's costs and everything within this document for those inpatient services that we're leaving off the table to a certain degree because we don't really have an inpatient, um, option here within the county.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so those are one of the, that was one of the things that kind of jumped out at me when I was reading this document was there's a lot of things that, you know, are covered within this document that we just don't even.
Right, we don't have. I, I would love to, I, I have a, a dream, I guess you could say, of a, um, of a facility similar to Phoenix Place, if you're familiar with that in Town Falls.
Yes.
Um, and I think we would, well, location is always an issue as well. But with the recovery center where it's located, I would love to see us expand on that property back onto the back lot and be able to build, um, a facility that could take in the residential treatment, that could do respite care, that could do, um, you know, a crisis stabilization. You know, my dream would be that, you know, three o'clock in the morning when the police go and pick up somebody and they feel they're having a mental health issue, instead of taking them to the hospital, they bring them to our location and we have medical staff to do a physical to make sure that, you know, they're not having a heart attack or anything like that and need to be at the hospital. If it truly is a mental health situation, then they can be brought in then for a whole observation, um, you know, or a respite stay. Um, I mean, I, like I said, I've got a, I've got a whole plan in my head of, of what I would love that to look like. And, and I do know that for those, um, for that stay, that yes, we can get the money for that.
Yeah, reimburse them with up to eight hundred and some odd dollars per day for an individual. I, I mean, there, there's certainly costs with that, but I think honestly it could, would result in significant cost savings to us and to the hospital, to our jail and a lot of these other things if we're able to take care of some of these people within our county and not be sending them necessarily to Salem, which is just going to be really no ACH anyway.
Because we've got the cost of them being there for the trip and we've got the cost of the transportation, which is just astronomical to get them to where they need to be.
And we lose that local control as well as to be able to make determinations.
And I know we, we kind of tried to use that apartment at the corner, uh, of the building there, but the, the previous, uh, management never looked into licensing it or making it, you know, a, a facility that could be used in that capacity. So it, that was an opportunity that just kind of slipped through our fingers. Um, but if we, you know, if we wanted to do this right and of course license it and it would have to be secured, it would have to be staffed. Um, but it's something that I would really love to see happen in the, in the future.
Is your job title still intern or?
Yes, yes, we will hopefully be doing interviews, Charlie said probably next week. Um, and so we'll, we'll see where that goes.
Let us know when you start building.
Will do, let me know when we have money, but.
Isn't that county property?
Uh, some of it is, yeah, some of it is.
It is county property. It is.
And then some, and then the.
Show my email when you, when you earn that when you start building.
Well, and, and I had heard rumor, uh, when I first came here almost five years ago that yes, that was county property. Um, I had been told that if we chose to build on it, that the county would, you know, sort of kind of just, I guess, give us the land. The last time I talked to Charlie about my dream for that piece of property, um, he did tell me that the main problem would be area for parking. Um, and there is a lot between the building and, uh, Lakey Lodge, but sitting back on that lot is a house. I don't know who currently owns that house or what the situation is, but it was kind of mentioned that, you know, if we could get that lot in that house, then we could have parking and then, you know, be able to have that space. But again, you know, that doesn't solve the problem because we would need the money to build and, you know, where that funding was coming from in construction. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, again, it's, it's a, it's a dream of mine. I don't know if, if it'll come to fruition or if that it would even be the location if it does. But I mean, I've already got, you know, a floor plan designed of what I would like to see us have, you know, as far as the services. Um, one of the main things right now is we really need to, to get our S U D services and our mental health services back together in one building. Our team being split the way it is has not been real conducive over the last few years. Um, the family center where we serve the kids will always be at another location. Just because of the population we serve, we can't have kids in the waiting room and whatnot. So family center will always be a separate entity, but we really need to get mental health and S U D back under one roof and working together as one team. We're just feeling a little fractured right now.
Yeah, yeah, you guys are split on a, a lot of different buildings and it's not good.
It's hard.
All right.
Okay.
I have any other questions?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, any other items to come before us today, um, updates?
I got, uh, at AOC, I got asked by Commissioner Todd Nash, who's now the chairman of, or Oregon Cowals Association, to be the environmental, uh, strategy person.
In, endangered species, sorry. Yes, I had yes all right there.
Yeah. Uh, so I told him I would agree to take that on to your term. I could probably quit at any time, but I'm already doing the sage grouse thing for the commissioners.
Makes sense.
We'll see. So he's gonna try to set up some meetings and see if we can get a committee together. But I'd probably be a co-chair with somebody else.
Good deal. One more thing. Yeah. Gotta be careful with that. The bandwidth issue.
So we need to just talk about two, what we're gonna do with this COVID, five hundred thousand. You guys can be thinking about that. Um, we're kind of limited. I thought we could do, you know, some things up north also, but we can't because it was Reski that gave us money and he wants it in what his jurisdiction wants. And so it's gotta be south of Dollar Falls. Well, and it was kind of, then we're not gonna kind of focus toward economic development.
So we had a meeting last Tuesday before Thanksgiving on broadband. And USDA helped put it on. There's currently an open session for funding. Not sure that Lake and Clank counties are gonna be eligible because you have to have engineering, you have to have, you know, you have to have a lot in place before you become eligible for some of this funding. I'm gonna sit in on another broadband call tomorrow with the town, the same person, but also some different players and listen to probably something similar but different, but I'm gonna ask some more questions. To get to your question, broadband is an option. And, uh.
So it's gotta be spent by twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
And so my thought is like on the broadband and then like part of the ghost of fairgrounds or Hughesford Grant, uh, patch for the fairgrounds, uh, master plan and different things on the master plan. And, but Denise is just kind of wanting us to get something together, just, you know. So. One of the limitations too, it's gonna be in South Lake County. It's got, and it can't go to.
Why is it limited to South? Why is it limited to South Kennington?
Because Reski, Reski's the one that secured O and L.
That was his batteries.
And so he wanted it in his jurisdiction.
Is the fairgrounds within his jurisdiction? Yes, it is. Yeah, it is.
Everything west of three ninety-five.
I was thinking there's, it was something north of one forty, but no, it's all, it's all Reski's up.
Yeah, all the way to Valley Falls, West Ohio.
Well, Reski's not in our district here come January, right?
Yeah, but it was, well, it, it was, he was in our county when that went through, so.
And he knows the one that uses for like a childcare facility. I asked Denise why, she's, she didn't know. That was his.
We have childcare facility, hopefully coming. School.
I'd be fighting with like splitting it down the middle and our problem I get fairgrounds is matching the money on the grant and that would give us.
Okay, yeah.
And then if you guys wanna spend the rest on broadband, I'm pretty happy with that.
Well, let's, if, we're not pressed right now. I know Denise wants some answers, but I might be talking to her again later this week. I know Clam of Kennings wants to spend theirs own housing.
Well, half of them.
Yeah. They, they got, they got. This is five hundred thousand. Preach, Kenny. Okay. Good deal. Um, one other question I was gonna ask you guys to. Huh?
I don't know. That's why I told you to read it down.
Dang it. It's okay.
I'll, I'll do a brief update so you can have some time to think about them all over. Um, I did talk to, um, Annette Levy and asked her for a little bit of an update on the Q C T issue that we were having with the qualified census tract. And so what happened was, did you get it? You got it. All right. The county does not meet the income criteria for the Q C T is what came out of it. Senator Warden's office figured this out. So they're working to change some of the treasury guidance. So. Hey, Kyle, how are you?
Hi. Just gonna let you know I'm heading out.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'll be back.
Scott Norman, he's from Water Resources Department.
All right.
So.
Did you get all your mail?
Yep. Got it. Yeah.
All right. Do you mind, uh, do you mind coming in? Just give what you gotta get.
Well, I got five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes? What am I walking into?
Yeah, yep.
You're in a work session with commissioners.
Okay.
Do you mind just giving us a brief update on this?
Yeah, maybe a brief introduction.
Sure, right here?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Uh. Make sure these are right. All right. So I guess for the record, I'm Kyle Borman. I'm the region manager for the Oregon Water Resources Department and uh, fill in part-time watermaster for Lake County. Um, so, uh, yeah, so Brian Meyer, who was the watermaster here for more than a decade, uh, retired as of, uh, about the middle of October. And our department, uh, is going to be actively recruiting a replacement for Brian here in the, in the basin. Um, our, uh, department, uh, with this last legislative session had a tremendous increase in our budget. I think somewhere around thirty-five new positions for the agency. And so we are in a massive recruitment effort uh, for the, not only the, the new positions, but we had vacancies of thirty-plus positions that were unfilled. And so we're working on getting through those. Um, the agency has prioritized the list of, uh, of the positions they wanted to get in place, which we've recruited probably about twenty folks now. And so now we're working down to, uh, out throughout the state, uh, and the watermaster here, as well as a new watermaster district in Pitt County, uh, which is still part of the region that I work in. Uh, we'll be recruiting those here shortly. I don't have an exact timeframe, but, um, you know, just knowing how things go and how long it takes. Hope to have somebody here in March or April would be really ideal. So, uh, as far as a new person for Lake.
So that's fast-moving for the state.
That is fast-moving for the state, yeah. Yeah, there's all kinds of processes we go through. I mean, it could happen sooner. You know, if we get the right person, everything works out great. Yeah, it would be sooner, but I've been through recruitments for a while. It takes a while. So.
Is there anything on Lake County's plate that, that sparks your attention right now that need to put extra time to or anything?
Uh, there was an issue with, uh, the, uh, Christmas Valley water system and people drilling wells up there. I, I haven't heard anything about that, so I'm not sure if that has settled down at all, but I know that, that could be an ongoing issue where.
Yeah, I think that, that was still a concern.
It still is, okay.
About, you know, people, you know, punching illegal wells and everything down to that first offer for.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have a lot of talking house wells. Yeah, house wells and everything that were just happening in some of the residential areas. And they were getting some pretty nasty water, but more importantly, they were popping numerous holes.
Yeah.
Not very far from, you know, other wells, septic systems and other things like that. And people were attempting to pump water out of them. And so it was, it was a health concern that we were looking at with the water district.
Yeah.
So, and we're still, still evaluating, trying to figure out what to do. So, but yeah.
Yeah. So the other, the other issue in that same area is, uh, we did an audit of the irrigated ground up there and found quite a few acres of illegal irrigation. Or at least I, I say illegal, meaning that we couldn't find a water right to cover the land that was being irrigated. So we're working on now, uh, contacting the, the owners by letter, uh, you know, just alerting, hey, we found this. Can you, uh, do you have a water right? We don't have a record of a water right. So that's kind of the first phase of what we're doing. So.
Do you have an estimate on how many acres that was?
It was around thirteen hundred. Yeah. And I don't know the extent of our audit of the entire area, but about thirteen hundred. So it's thirteen hundred out of about sixty thousand. You know, for percentage-wise, it's not big, but still thirteen hundred acres of irrigated ground that has no water rights, pretty bad.
And you were thinking that some of that actually has largely been corporate?
Well, oh, I don't know. I was just, I just know that a lot of them are under businesses, you know, that, that ground out there. What I was, what I was getting at when I was talking to you was, it's not just mom and pops, you know, and their.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Their, their businesses. So, yeah. Um, so anyway, we're, we're gonna be notifying landowners. So you may hear from those folks saying, hey, what's the Water Resources Department doing here, you know? What, you know, what, you know, our number one regulatory, uh, priority is illegal irrigation. So when we, when we discover it, that's the first thing we do is tackle illegal irrigation.
Do you do that by uh, satellite or how do you do that?
Uh, we use satellites, but we, uh, in the process, we always go out on the ground to confirm.
Yeah.
The department is experimenting with, um, this, uh, Open E T, which is a satellite-based program that's near real time. So the satellites fly, I think it's every seven days, maybe even sooner than that. And then they can use, uh, some computer, uh, processing that looks at what's the evacotranspiration of a crop. And you can tell the difference between what's irrigated and then something adjacent that's not irrigated. And that difference shows up on this, uh, uh, technology that they're implementing in the Harney Basin right now or already have.
Yeah.
But that's outside my region. So I only pay a little bit of attention to it.
You're lucky.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, I got enough going on.
Yeah.
In the Clam. So I cover the Clam too.
You're really blessed.
Yeah. Yeah. Clam is a whole nother story. Uh, let's see. So Christmas Valley issues, uh, recruiting for a watermaster and then oh my, water supply. Uh, most of the reservoirs are empty.
Yeah.
So we need some runoff this, we need some snow and then runoff next spring. So.
Need that.
Yeah. So that's kind of where we're at.
What's long-range work guys?
Well, you know, uh, this is a La Niña winter and generally it's not exact. But generally La Niñas provide colder, wetter winters. Um, just happens that the jet stream right now is up in, on the Canadian border. And that's all of our precipice going on up there, which should be down here.
Right.
Yeah. So hopefully the jet stream will move down.
Yeah.
And settle over Oregon and Northern California for a while.
Well, thanks, Kyle. You know, we got a lot of agriculture folks that care deeply about this position. And you've heard me talk to you on the phone and whatnot and look forward to getting that position filled.
And I, and I've spoke with Mr. Williams about possibly one of you sitting on the interview panel.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. Cause we like, you know, for a watermaster position, pretty important, uh, position in a, in a county that, uh, you know, we want that person to fit in with the community. So I think that's a good, a good practice to have. Somebody outside of O W R D on the interview panel. So if it works out, that'd be great.
Great. Thanks. I'd like to do that.
Okay.
We don't wanna hold you up because now you're gonna be with the water users. So, um, yeah.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks.
Good to see you.
Question. If you were offered a drink, would you get a glass of water? Coke?
So my, my other thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about that we haven't talked about in a while was the decommissioning of roads and then using those roads so we don't get net. We don't net anymore on roads for the northern part.
Additional road miles?
Yeah. Put them in Christmas Valley and some key roads. Are you guys still on board with that or?
Yeah.
If we could decommission a couple of roads.
My, yeah, my understanding of ordinance one says that we need, that the road first needs to meet county standards before we can take it into the county maintenance system. Now, we'll determine what county standards are. Some, some would argue, you know, say that we, the county does a terrible job taking care of the roads, you know. But then again, you know, perspective is a funny thing because we do an awful lot of work on our roads. For the amount of miles that we have to maintain, um, we do a pretty good job. So if we can get local buy-in, and there's a few locals up on the north end, the Christmas Valley town site, that puts tens of thousands of dollars of resources gravel and their time grading and crowding the roads properly. If we can get those roads up to a standard that's acceptable, it, it encourages buy-in from the public and from those landlords. Um, and also helps us identify which roads the, the community's willing to prioritize. So if we can get them to that standard, we can look at adoption. But I'm still on board with.
I think we need to have some.
The key is not to gain.
Right.
Yeah.
And so talking with Kevin Hawk, you know, he's talked about several roads and I can think of one or two more that we could probably add to that. But, um, I think it would be a great investment in North Lake if we can put a couple of main arterial roads in, at least in the town site where people can use those as the main road and then, you know, they'll be plowed in winter and so forth. And so just like our investment into the community.
I think if we identify at least one or two kind of get a feel for that process, um, you know, some of the ones that are very clearly like servicing, you know, one person, like two mile, three mile long driveway. Um, I think those are the ones that we want to prioritize, you know, looking at, okay, is this really servicing the public? And then we move towards, you know, adopting another road into our county maintenance system. I'm perfectly on board with that still. And Kevin and I talked about it not too terribly long ago.
Won't talk to him again.
Here.
I was in the mid-stuff talking to him when I got COVID, so I'll start it over again. So.
Well, it's something that we can work on during the winter months because, you know, a lot of our guys have switched over towards potentially just plowing. But we don't have snow yet. So, you know.
I just, I just don't want it to fall through the cracks and keep running on.
Agreed.
So if we can get a couple of nice roads in Christmas Valley, get the broadband in and the water in, get it back to the community. So anyways, that's all I have.
Yeah, you have consensus from us. We like.
So I, I, I wanna hear the proposal.
And I'll make sure, I'll make sure Kevin gives us all the numbers that we need, what he thinks.
Yeah.
And then go over it.
Yeah, and maybe bring Darwin in for, and make sure it's on his radar for the road vacation process because he needs to be part of that.
Yeah, I got a visit with Darwin too. So I'll visit with Darwin.
Okay.
Um, Jim texted me back on the chamber thing and he said it would look like we were taking gifts over fifty dollars. And so I thought pretty much we just contribute to the.
Chamber.
Chamber itself.
Correct. Not the gala, but to the chamber. We wanna make a contribution.
For all of us.
Yeah. I think we should stay away from any of the, you know, the, their sponsorship.
Yeah, because like you said, we all pay our own way.
Yeah, we pay our own way. We don't need any of the V I P tickets or anything because that can really, any single one of those gets over fifty dollars really quick. So.
They're fifty bucks a piece.
Right.
Just the two.
That's it. So, uh, I, I, I'm not comfortable touching that with public dollars. Uh, but I'm all for helping out the chamber.
And most ladies have done a wonderful job. I'll do everything we can to support them. So that's all I have.
All right. All right, with that, um, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Um, it is two twenty. Um, we'll see you guys all tomorrow.